All right, good morning, everyone. Welcome to the March 12th Nassau County Planning Commission Meeting. If you're here to speak on any of the issues on the agenda, the speaker registration forms over to your left. I'm not. Okay. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
United States of America, to the Republic which is standing, the nation of God, visible, free, just, for all. Chairman Glennon, Vice Chair, First Vice Chair Greenfield, Second Vice Chair Shapiro, Third Vice Chair Lewis, Commissioner Blue.
Present.
Commissioner Elaby, Commissioner Shaper, Commissioner Warren. So we have two. We have a quorum.
And I understand I said your left, it's my left. The speaker registration forms right over there. All right. Acknowledgment and receipt of the transcripts from February 13th.
Second.
Very good. Um, Ospac. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. We're gonna go out of order today. Uh, we're gonna do zoning first. We may lose a quorum, so. You ready, Marty?
Yeah. All right, Marty, why don't we, why don't we do this? Um, let's first take, well, does anybody have any questions on the items that are LD? Items number one, two, four, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 14, 17, and 18.
Uh, number nine is an LDL.
Sorry about that. Take that down. Okay, so it's items number one, two, four, six, seven, eight, 10, 11, 14, 17, and 18. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, why don't we do the Freeport cases next? Commissioner Elaby is.
Just for record on 18 also, uh, because Freeport case, Commissioner Elaby is.
Okay, I missed that.
And on, before we go any further, um, where's John? We're getting this all recorded? All right. Uh, so anybody that comes up to speak, we do not have a stenographer today, so please speak clearly into the microphone. It's all being recorded. Thank you.
Which, excuse me.
Hold on.
Yeah, sure. Uh, which Freeport case we're talking about? 13?
We, uh, we have 15. We have 12, 13, 15, and 18.
Okay, so.
Yeah, but we have to have Commissioner Elaby off, so we'll just redo it without him.
All right.
Marty, you wanna do the two, uh, LDs?
South Maine.
Twelve and 15.
The two companion ones?
No.
Okay.
Twelve and 18.
All right, 12 and 18, okay. All right, case number 12 is NCPC case number 224220. This is the village of Freeport, and this is for subdivision height and area variances. The subject parcel currently consists of a motel in the southerly half, an asphalt parking cabanas and a restaurant on the northerly half. Applicant is proposing to subdivide the property into two lots with a catering facility proposed in the northerly half, which is a building lot B, which is about 5,500 square feet, and an existing hotel, and a new hotel added proposed for the southerly half, building lot A. Uh, it's a companion application, item number 13. Um, this, um, the, the proposed catering facility, uh, requires the demolition of the cabanas and restaurant. The following variances are required: insufficient sod yard setback, insufficient rear yard setback, no loading zone provided, excessive height. In addition, a bulkhead indicated in the site plan has yet to be approved to withstand the construction of a new structure. This project, in conjunction with the proposed hotel, um, uh, which is a, uh, case number 13, was previously before the Planning Commission on 8/8/2019, um, and was denied, recommended for denial. The catering facility portion was shown to have a significant parking shortfall, and it was subsequently denied by the Planning Commission. The current plan shows that the catering facility has been scaled back somewhat with additional parking being provided beneath the raised first floor, resulting in parking compliant, uh, project. In addition, valley parking was pre-provided. Staff recommends local determination.
It's on number 12.
That's number 12.
Okay, do I have a motion for an LD?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve, uh, number 12, which is, uh, NCPC number 224220 as a local determination.
Second?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Let's go to 13.
You say 13?
Okay.
Uh, that's, uh, NCPC case number 224320. That's also the village of Freeport. It's for subdivision height area and parking variances, a companion, uh, application to the previous one heard. Um, the existing, uh, this is gonna be when it's subdivided, uh, building lot A, um, and the, and, and the existing two-story motel with 52 units will be maintained. The proposed four-story hotel with 46 units will be located where the existing one-story restaurant bar is, is located, which is the easterly end of the motel, which abuts, uh, Freeport Creek. The following variances are required: excessive height with three stories and 40 feet permitted, and four stories and 47 feet proposed, insufficient rear yard setback, no loading zone provided, insufficient parking, uh, almost 100 park, 97 parking spaces required, 39 spaces provided, and they're all stacked. Um, the project, uh, is in, in conjunction with the proposed catering facility, as previously heard before the Planning Commission on 8/8/2019. The initial plan was for a five-story 50-foot, uh, mo- hotel addition, whereas the current plan reduces the height to four stories, 47 feet. The parking deficiency remains essentially unchanged. Staff recommends additional information. Uh, the new hotel will result in a 60% parking, uh, deficiency. In addition, the hotel motel is stacked spaces that will require valley parking, which is not indicated in the plan. As such, a parking analysis is requested to address the efficiency. Also, the analysis should address the absence of loading and unloading areas, and it should, uh, it should be FEMA compliant, as it is right on the Freeport Creek, and they may have to rebuild the bulkhead anyhow.
So moved.
Second.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Number, which one? 15?
18.
18, okay. 18?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, item number 18, that's, uh, NCPC case number 129120. This is, um, for parking variance. The applicant is the South Shore Child Guidance Association. This is a proposed reuse of an existing two-story business industrial commercial building, which is about 22,600 square feet, currently, uh, used as a can- candy factory, where it will be, um, uh, converted to a child guidance center. A South Shore Child Guidance Center is currently located at 91 Guy Lombardo Avenue. There are no off-street parking spaces provided, with a total of 57 parking spaces required. The properties are pre-existing non-conforming commercial buildings that does not provide parking. Uh, the existing asphalt, uh, loading area, that should be not leading area, along the northerly side of the building will be converted to a pedestrian path to the entrance to the building with an off-street, uh, pickup and drop-off area. Um, this was initially heard by the Planning Commission on 2/13/2020. The Commission requested a parking analysis and other information. Uh, such an analysis was provided. Uh, the facility will be, uh, for children between the ages of five and 21 and their families. Appointments are generally made after school and on weekends. There will be 15 employees on weekdays between 8:30 a.m. and 3:30 p.m., and 20 employees and 15, uh, patients between 3:30 p.m. and 9:00 p.m. Um, on Saturday, there will be 20 employees and 15 patients between 8:30 and 3:30 p.m. Patients to visit the office for 30 minutes to an hour on a rotating basis. The analysis indicated, uh, that the proposed use will not be more intensive than the previous or the current industrial use, and will in fact reduce, uh, truck traffic. The parking analysis indicates that ample parking is provided on Aunt Street, uh, along church, and within nearby municipal parking lot. Um, this, uh, service that is being proposed is not consistent with the idea of vehicles queuing at a specific time, as individuals and their families will arrive at predetermined appointment times. The report concluded that mitigation measures are not warranted at this time, and that there is ample parking. Staff recommends local determination.
Do I have a, uh, motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve it with local determination, NCPC 129120.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
We have one more, I think.
Number 15.
Okay, item number 15 is NCPC case number 228120. Again, the village of Freeport, and this is for use in parking variances. This is a proposed change of use from an office building to a, um, mixed-use building with ground-floor warehouse of about 1,100 square feet, and the addition of a, of a second floor for two apartment units. A use variance is required. As residential, it's not permitted in the service business zoning district. A parking variance is also required. There's a total of five parking spaces required and two provided. To the west or to the rear of the side are homes. To the north along, uh, North Main Street is a commercial building, architectural products and window, uh, windows. To the, to the east, of course, North Main, is a church and church parking. To the south and attached to, uh, to the subject property is a warehouse for hardware and building supplies. This stretch of, uh, North Main Street is characterized by warehouses, wholesale businesses, other light industrial uses, vehicle repair businesses, as well as small commercial strips. There are no commercial buildings with second-floor apartment uses along this stretch of North Main Street. Staff, uh, recommends denial, as the North Main Street is characterized by light industrial warehouse, uses vehicle repair shops, small commercial strips, no second-floor residential uses. The proposed use is out of character with North Main Street, and may establish a precedent for second-floor residential uses in a heavily, uh, commercialized area without adequate parking or other residential amenities. Also, it does not necessarily satisfy the, uh, the rationale for granting, uh, uh, use variances. Staff recommends, uh, denial.
Commissioners, any comments? I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we adopt staff's recommendations for NCPC 228120 for denial.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Chair, the floor is yours.
Okay, Ospac?
Oh.
Yeah, yeah, hold on.
I'm jumping too quick.
Wish things a couple more then.
All right, Marty, let's go back to, um, the rest of the calendar. Commissioner Elaby? All right, um.
Item three, would that maybe?
Let's do item three first.
Okay. Item three, that's NCPC case number 313120. This is the village of Valley Stream. It's for special use in parking variances. This is the conversion of an existing one-story retail building with a partial second floor to a house of worship, uh, with a congregation capacity of about 160 persons. A parking variance is required, whereas 58 spaces, uh, are required, zero are provided. Um, to the north is a two-story brick commercial building. To the east is a commercial, uh, commercial building. To the west, across North Main Street, is a two-story office building. Uh, to the south and abutting the subject property is a private parking lot for 20 North Central Avenue, which is the previously mentioned office building across the street. Um, there's me, uh, Aunt Street needed parking along North Main Street. Um, this case was initially before the Planning Commission on 4/16/2019. At that time, the Commission deemed the application as incomplete and requested a parking analysis. No such analysis was provided, and the plan has not changed with this resubmission. So staff has recommended, again, that a parking analysis be, uh, be provided. There's no off-street parking spaces are provided. No municipal, uh, lots are observed in the general vicinity.
Commissioners, any questions?
Bob, I've got a question for you. Since they haven't given us what we've asked for, and we've deemed it incomplete, instead of constantly putting this back on, can we take it off until we get the information that we need?
We're gonna have the debate that we've had a, a number of times, because, as I've, I've indicated to the commissioners, their, their responsibility is to send us everything that they have. If they don't have what you're looking for, theoretically, the clock is running, and after 30 days, it becomes an LD. So if you're asking me to give you a legal answer to the question, that, that, that's where, that's probably, if they, if they had left something out, uh, from their package, it's another story. Then I don't have a problem with incomplete.
Listening to us and not sending back the message that we want parking analysis.
You know, there are a lot of boards out there that don't require, they, they, like, I, I'll give you an example. My understanding is the Town of Hempstead zoning board, they tell applicants, you present, we don't have a requirement, you present your case. If you think you need a traffic expert, bring a traffic expert. If you think you need a real estate, but if you decide to go on your own, that's the risk you take. So if they don't require it upfront at the filings, it's not in the file, and it's not gonna be sent over, and they, and, and the, and the Secretary of the Zoning Board has, has complied with the law as far as referrals to this, this commission.
My own experience is that more often than not, when we, when the Commission requests, uh, additional information like a parking study, the municipalities do listen to us, and they, and they, and they, and we do get them. This one, in Valley Stream, more often than not, we don't.
Did they reply at all?
Did they reply at all?
No, no, we just got a resubmission of the application, the same application. Hasn't changed, but it came back to us. I guess the village never approved it or voted on it, reserved decision or whatever, or adjourned it or whatever, so it was just resubmitted, the same application. So I brought it, you know, I felt compelled to bring it to the commission again.
Commissioners, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I would move for denial.
Well, it's not denial, it's additional information. Didn't you want additional info?
That's what I suggested, yes.
You recommended?
Incomplete, yes.
You're going to deny it?
If we're asking for more information, isn't it incomplete?
Yeah.
That should be the motion.
Okay.
Well, what should we do? Deny it, or mark it as still incomplete? How do we get the message across the Valley Stream that they have to...
If you're not comfortable with the application, as it's been referred to you, then you might want to consider making a denial.
Okay.
You are?
Or you could think of a modification, or you could think of a letter saying that something should be done, but...
The only problem with that is they could override us.
Absolutely.
I think the information will be forthcoming. I think council, not on this case, but council for this particular project is here, not to speak on it, but I was... It was indicated that additional information will be provided, so maybe we should ask for additional information.
No?
If you are the fact that council is listening in on this, can we do it incomplete? Applicants, council.
Yeah.
Marty?
I'm sorry, council to the board, not a... Council to the Valley Stream, not the application.
Just so that I'm clear, are you saying that there has been some amendment or change since the application was originally submitted verbally or any shape, form, or fashion, or no?
It hasn't changed. It's the same application that I received.
I did not change my motion except to you.
But the information will be provided according to the council to the board. So we could deem it incomplete.
All right, so Marty, if we deem it denied, they can still provide it to the board anyway?
Okay, is there a second on the motion? Denial.
The only thing I have to say is, this is kind of in a downtown setting, and many of the properties don't have, you know, significant off-street parking, and many of them are pre-existing non-conforming, but we'd still like to see something, so that's why I was giving them an additional leeway with respect to giving us a...
Motion to deny and second it? All those in favor? Aye. Okay. Opposed? Denied.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed to the denial. And Neil?
He doesn't care.
Then it becomes an LD.
Now we can take a new motion, can't we?
Certainly can.
Okay, I'll take another motion.
If you don't take a new motion, that's what happens. Fair or not? That's correct, you need five votes.
So is there another motion? Is there another motion?
Additional information. There's a motion for additional information?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Okay, so that's... Wait. Any opposed?
Yes.
Do you want to do a roll call?
No.
No? Five, one? Okay.
Commissioner Blue voted no.
Just for the purposes, since we don't have a stenographer, Commissioner Blue is the only nay.
Okay, thank you. Item number five, I guess that's another one with a letter, local termination with a letter. I guess I could read that, describe that one?
Go ahead.
Okay. Item number five is NCPC case number 214220. This is in the Town of Hemp... Town of Hempstead, Garden City South, and it's for area variances. This is a proposed four-lot substandard subdivision on which four two-family homes are... will be constructed. Each proposed lot has a frontage, has a zoning-compliant frontage of 50 feet with a... and lot areas ranging from 4,600 to 5,400 square feet. Residential development is permitted in the business zone, which this is zoned, under the residency guidelines in the Town of Hempstead. As such, two-family homes are permitted in the business zone district if they have a minimum lot area of 12,000 square feet. Obviously, none of these do. The subject property is developed with a nursery, which is currently vacant. Nassau Boulevard, across from the subject property, is primarily developed with two-family homes on 40 to 45-foot lots, so they're pre-existing non-conforming two-family properties. To the north along Nassau Boulevard is the business district for Hamlet, Garden City South. The site indicates four individual residential lots, each with their own driveway apen with access on Nassau Boulevard. This will require 230 and F review for safe ingress and egress, as this is a county road. It should be noted that the property could be developed with a wide range of business uses that are as of right under the business zoning designation. Staff recommends local determination with a letter indicating that consideration should be given to consolidating four individual curb cuts into two curb cuts with shared driveways on the heavily-traveled Nassau Boulevard, which may be...
Is that the only picture we have?
Doesn't look heavily trafficked.
No, I'm looking...
No, no, I mean, it's not your typical turnpike. You're right, it doesn't look heavily trafficked.
I just want... I want to see the curb cuts.
Well, I mean, I do have the site plan or the Portman map. Yeah, there it is. So there's four curb cuts, four driveways on Nassau Boulevard.
I make a motion for an LD with a letter?
Second.
We have number nine, okay.
Nine, and then sixteen.
Okay, make this fast. This is NCPC case number 218220. This is in the village of Westbury. It's for area variances. This is a proposed three-story, 12-unit multifamily dwelling that requires several variances. That include lot size. Minimum lot size required is 18,000 square foot. Proposed lot size is 17,628 square feet. Yards required abutting residential district require 25 feet, proposed 16.2 feet. Front yard and parking, small parking variance also is required. The site is currently occupied by two, two-and-a-half-story frame multifamily dwellings that might have been initially single-family dwellings. The ad-stide storage of trucks on a premises was noted. To the west are dwellings along Butler Street. To the north, across Butler Street, are single-family dwellings and a multifamily dwelling. To the east along Butler Street is a dwelling beyond which is a large five-story multifamily structure. To the north is a church property and Verizon property that fronts on Maple Avenue. Butler Street is a one-way westbound, and on-street parking along north side is permitted. The applicant was before the planning commission on two previous occasions for a change of zone for essentially the same project. In both instances, the planning commission did recommend denial as over-intensification of development on a street that is still predominantly single-family homes and a couple of small multifamily properties. And we cited spot zoning. Subsequent to this, however, the village implemented a change of zone for the subject property and adjacent property from Res C to Apartment A zoning district in order to create a multifamily transitional zone between single-family neighborhood to the west and a higher-density residential to the east, and also the businesses along Post Avenue. It is also TOD. It's walkable to the train station. According to the village, the proposed project conforms with the vision that the village has concerning the redevelopment of properties that are transitional in nature and that are TOD. So staff recommends local determination, however, including a letter that addresses workforce housing set aside, and we will attach the county's model workforce housing ordinance with this as we do with other similar multifamily developments.
Marty, let me just, first of all, correct the number. It's NCPC number, this case, item, agenda item number nine is 218220. Okay, 21... Okay, thank you. And now I will take a motion for ODL.
If I could, Mr. Chair, I'd like to commend the village for doing such a good job of addressing issues that were presented about their zoning and how they were trying to do the development previously, and they corrected them. So with that note, and I'd like to recommend local determination with the letter as outlined by staff.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. The last one is agenda item number 16.
Okay, let me just... Okay, thank you. Item number 16 is NCPC case number 32120. This is in the Town of North Hempstead in the Hamlet of Albertson. It's for area and parking variances. This is the conversion of an existing two-story, 6200-square-foot office building to a house of worship mosque. According to the town, the building is currently used for offices for the North Shore Islamic Center. Parking for the building is located below the race second floor of the building. With the renovation of the office building, there will be offices for the mosque, space for religious services, public assembly up to 550-person occupancy, meeting space, kitchen, and other ancillary space. Services currently held at a VFW hall at 155 Serentown Road. The building footprint will not change. Variance is required for frontory setbacks, which are pre-existing conditions. Also insufficient parking, as 141 spaces are required, 22 spaces provided on-site. To the rear, to the east or rear of the building is a residential neighborhood. To the south along Willis Avenue is a dental office and a senior residence, to the senior multifamily residence. To the west, across Willis Avenue, is an auto repair shop. To the north, along Willis Avenue, is a small strip of stores. There's also a bus stop in front of the site. A traffic and parking analysis was performed. The report states that upon completion of the project, Friday midday services will continue to be held at the VFW hall at 155 Serentown Road. The town, however, indicated services will be held... All services will be held at the renovated office building, when it's renovated to a total religious institution. Parking occupancy counts were taken for the subject property and nearby private parking lot, on-street parking along Willis Avenue, and surrounding residential side streets. A total of 204 parking spaces were inventoried, including the subject property along Willis Avenue, a parking lot for a nearby American Legion Hall, and surrounding residential streets, with an average occupancy of 47 spaces on a midday Friday. On a Friday evening, the number of occupied spaces averaged 139. On Saturday morning, the average number of occupied spaces was 64, and Sunday, midday, the average was 63. So the report indicates that in an effort to address potential parking spillover on residential streets, the applicant has made arrangements for additional parking with seven nearby properties along Willis Avenue, including American Legion Hall, a TD Bank, a dental office, an auto center, retail building, and gas station. Staff recommends additional information that provides these agreements in writing with between the mosque and the nearby property owners that indicates they will accept spillover parking from the mosque. Also provide some clarification if services will be held at 155 Serentown Road, which is the VFW hall location, after the complete renovation of the building. There is some contradicting information in this regard.
Marty, so the services are currently being held at the VFW?
Yes.
And what's the parking lot like during those services?
They inventoried... Well, that was part of their inventory, and they, you know, they indicated that between that and other... There was enough parking for the several on-street and off-street parking lots that they inventoried, including...
No, but I'm asking, how many parking spots are normally used for those services, is what I'm asking?
Oh, yeah.
Do we know?
Let me... I don't want to just throw something at you. Let me look at the plan.
Okay, but they currently have 47, right?
They... No, you're talking about the current office building? The current office building has 22 spaces provided on-site. They use the VFW hall, which is 155 Serentown Road. That's not within... Again, I don't have the utilization for that, and that's not within walking distance of this particular...
Okay, with your additional information, I think we'll get the answer anyway, so...
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
I make a motion to adopt staff's recommendation for additional information.
Second. All those in favor? Aye.
Just one more.
Any opposed?
Good. Ask for additional information, find out if they're the sole tenant in the building. After the... Yeah, after the, you know, after the renovation, are they... Because that impacts on parking.
I'm sorry?
That impacts upon parking.
Oh, yeah, if the mosque is the sole tenant, you want to know?
Well, the mosque and the offices of the Islamic Center, which I have no problem with. I just want to know what the tenancy is in the building.
Okay. So the motion's carried.
Okay, we're done. All right, OSPAC. And again, for those that came in late, anybody looking to speak on any agenda items, speaker registration forms on my left, your right, on the table there. Make sure you get it to staff beforehand. Thank you. John, we're going to adjourn this first one without date? Is that correct?
Yes, I think we should withdraw it, and it will be re-noticed when it's ready.
Okay. I don't have an objection.
Okay. Do we need a motion?
All right, so what I need is a motion to adjourn without date.
So moved.
Motion made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Thank you.
Next case is revised planning and secret recommendation for NCPC file OSPAC 152010. This is for release of property in Woodbury Road, Woodbury, Town of Voice to Bay, Section 14, Block 38, Lot 18. Nassau County sought disposition of this property back in 2010 for a sale to an adjacent property owner. OSPAC and Nassau County Planning Commission voted to recommend the sale and an unlisted negative declaration. The property was never sold and is now being proposed for transfer to the Nassau County Land Bank for the development of an affordable single-family residence. Given the amount of time that has passed since the last review, the fact that secret forms are no longer used, and that action is technically different for a sale to an adjacent owner versus sale to a land bank for development of affordable housing, is requested we bring to the planning commission for revised planning and secret recommendation. Staff recommends to issue an unlisted negative declaration for this project.
Mr. Chair.
Hold on, did we need to open a public hearing on this?
No.
Okay.
Public hearing was open and closed.
There's a recommendation for a neg deck.
For a neg deck?
And a referral?
Kevin Walsh is also here for real estate to...
Do you want to add anything, Keith?
Just that John did a good job in a quick summary. Just a little more additional information. This was a property that the planning commission did approve for disposition back about 10 years ago in 2010. I think initially it was looked at by an adjoining owner. There were several requests for bids and RPs issued over many years. Unfortunately, none of them successful, resulting in a transaction. Part of the reason probably is, although it's a vacant buildable lot, it's also a severely sloped property. So any development in the land bank will have to work with this. Will be subject to the Town of Voice to Bay's Steve Slope ordinance.
Thanks for the clarification.
So since this was through a review many years ago, the thinking is that we wanted to do a new environmental assessment because the rules have changed since then. Today, we're going to do a classification as the first... Today, we're going to do a classification, is the first question, so we want to, under secret, classify it as unlisted. Do we also want to, John, do we also want to adopt a neg deck today?
Yes.
Okay, so that would, so that would be an amendment to the motion that it's both the classification of the item as unlisted and the, adopt the neg deck. Recommend that the Nassau County Legislature adopt the neg deck.
So moved, as amended.
And I'll second. Motion made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kev. Um, D., Willow View Estates?
Major subdivision application, determine completeness and adequacy of revised draft environmental impact statement dated February two thousand and twenty pursuant to State Environmental Quality Review Act, NCPC file number nineteen ninety-seven P-1, map of Willow View Estates.
And I, I just want to, John, thank you for the work that you've done on this. I know you kind of led the charge. This is probably the biggest major subdivision that we've done in the county in quite some time, so I, I know you under some time constraints, and I want to thank you for your efforts on this.
Welcome. On December sixth of two thousand and nineteen, the applicant submitted the DEIS, which was distributed to Nassau County DPW technical staff for review of completeness. A memo which included specific items that needed to be addressed for the DEIS was presented for public review, and on January thirtieth, two thousand and twenty, the Planning Commission determined that the DEIS was insufficient for public review, and requested the applicant to revise the DEIS to address all the outstanding comments. On February twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty, the applicant submitted revised DEIS, which staff distributed again to DPW technical staff for review and completeness and, and to make sure it addressed all outstanding items. Staff reviewed, received minor comments, yet substantive, that must be addressed prior to Planning Commission adopting the DEIS for completeness for public review. A memo again was prepared and provided to the commission of those five outstanding comments, and we are asking the Planning Commission to adopt the memo identifying what needs to be revised in the EIS, of the revised EIS dated February two thousand and twenty.
Do you have anyone from the applicant that wants to be heard on this?
Good morning, Chairman and members. Christian Brown, three-three-three, Earl Ovington Boulevard, Suite six oh one, Uniondale. And just also want to thank Mr. Procas, Mr. Sally. We've had a couple of calls about these remaining comments. We've gone over them with the engineers. If the commission adopts the resolution today, we anticipate answering those comments quickly, and we're working with staff. I think we have a proposed outline of the timeframes going forward, which hopefully will come to fruition, and the process will hopefully move to the next stage at the next hearing in early April. So, once the commission adopts the resolution today, the engineers will meet with the, the technical staff, again, I anticipate, the next week or so, answer the comments, hopefully to everybody's satisfaction, and then we'll move on to the next stage. So I just want to thank the staff again and the commission for the hard work.
Thank you. So, so counsel, could I, first, I want to say the new revised draft has three additional tables, tables thirty-three, thirty-four, and thirty-five. And so those are items that are responding, to a certain extent, to the concerns I raised in, in the previous hearing. So I'm glad to see that. I understand that you're, the, what you submitted, we're today looking at directing that there still be additional changes made. So I want to acknowledge that there were changes made in this, this section. As I look at the chart, I think the question from our perspective is, is it complete, not to a standard that I necessarily agree with every conclusion, but to a degree so that the people that come to the hearings that are going to look at this stuff can say, okay, understand this. And I do think some things could be done to make it clearer. The, the calculations that are presented should have footnotes, and many of them do, but many of them don't. And it seems to me, when you look at a chart like this, you should be able to back it out and figure out how'd they get those numbers. And, so I would just ask you...
Sure.
That be something that's looked at to make sure that it's adequately footnoted. It's also, I think, interesting in terms of a choice, and maybe it's sufficient for completeness today, but I certainly think this commission would, is going to want to know, not just, so there's a per-year number presented, the whole chart is about looking at what a greenhouse construction might mean in terms of both cost and CO2 numbers reduction compared to a conventionally-built home. And in that comparison, it gives CO2E numbers as a per-year number, and it's based essentially on current, today, two thousand and twenty.
Right.
But we know that a major piece of legislation was passed, the, the document acknowledges that the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act requires a seventy percent reduction in, requires a seventy percent renewable energy number for electricity by two thousand and thirty. So that's acknowledged in here, but the chart doesn't say what the CO2E numbers will be per year in two thousand and thirty. It just says per year as of like today. Understanding, of course, it's probably like a five-year build-out phase, so two thousand and thirty is only maybe five years or so after the construction of the last home. It seems reasonable to me that the chart should show the two thousand and thirty. So at this stage, I do think members of the public can look at that and try and do that calculation on their own. It would make more sense to me if it was in the charts now. And lastly, the thirty-five, table thirty-five, it seems to me should have been combined into the other tables. The, the other two tables are really the same table twice, with just a different dollar number, but really the premise would be that a portion of your electricity is coming from renewable source. That reduces your CO2 numbers.
Right.
There's a certain cost for that. You factor that into a total plan rather than doing one plan where you're doing geothermal and a one plan where you're doing solar. It should all be combined into one green home design. So those are my comments. I want to raise them now so that you're not surprised by them at the, at the stage where the public has given comments and I get to pick out the actual draft.
No, and I appreciate that. I can assure you that the staff and the applicant are aware of, of your particular areas of focus, and a lot of our conversations are hoping to address those matters, so it's helpful for you to tell us that now, and then when we, when we meet with the staff, which I hope we'll do within the next couple of days, we'll incorporate that and try to, you know, try to meet all those concerns, and then, as, as you point out, this is just the, really the beginning of the review process, so on the substance, there's going to be, I anticipate, quite a bit of back and forth, and I'm sure additional enhancements or changes as you go forward and we, we get ready to submit a, a final.
Thank you for saying that, because it's important that we understand the process, the stage we're at, and what's appropriate to debate at a later stage, perhaps.
Correct. So that's, that's our plan, and we hope to be able to go into that next stage with the public comment, public hearing, and working towards the preparation of a final report. Kick that off on April second. That's our, that's our goal.
So I'm glad to hear we have agreement between our resident expert, and I remember a famous statement, "Follow the process, and the process will protect you." I heard that somewhere in one of the meetings early on. So, as long as we follow the process and protect the residents, I'm all in favor of this.
Correct. So I'll, unless you have anything else, that's, that's where we stand, and again, hopefully on the April second, we'll move into the next phase.
Okay, I don't have anybody signed up for the public, not seeing or hearing anyone, I'll entertain a motion.
So, Sean, I think I might need a little help in clarifying what is the motion. We did already vote to say that we thought the draft as originally proposed was not complete.
Right.
And today, we're saying we have an understanding that it's still not yet complete.
That's correct. So the, the applicant resubmitted the DEIS. The commission has additional comments, so we are formally, or the commission would formally adopt those additional comments to be addressed in a subsequent resubmission.
And from what I heard from the applicant, they're okay with that. They're going to get those comments back.
Yes, as part of a formal memo from the commission.
Okay.
So the motion is...
So the motion is to adopt the comments on the resubmitted draft environmental impact statement.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'll try this. So NCPC file number nineteen ninety-seven P dash one, and my motion is that we declare the item, the proposed draft environmental impact statement as incomplete, and we are submitting to the applicant the comments of our staff and the concerns I raised during this hearing, and that's the motion. It's still incomplete, and we're submitting comments.
That's correct.
Seconded. Motion made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Mr. Procas, thank you again. Next, my major subdivision application, final map.
Major subdivision application, final map application for NCPC file number nineteen eighty-nine F-one, map of Treasure Island Marina, two, twenty-eight eighty Ocean Avenue in Seaford, Town of Hempstead, section sixty-three, block sixty-seven, lot one. This was adjourned from our previous meeting on February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty. At that meeting, the Nassau County Planning Commission adjourned this application as requested by legislated roads. This application will, if granted today, will require a bond, escrow, and inspection fee. And Christian Brown is here to speak for the applicant. As well as Al D'Agostino.
Yes, good morning again, Christian Brown, three-three-three, Earl Ovington Boulevard, Suite six oh one, Uniondale. I'm peering for the applicant. I'm joined by Mr. D'Agostino, who's co-counsel basically with me. He represents the contract vendor, who is in line to purchase these, these lots. We took extensive testimony at the last hearing. I'm not going to re-present the case unless the commission desires that I do so. We already presented the case. We had discussion about the, some of the zoning issues, which I know are not in this commission's purview, but we went over the fact that it's business-owned property. There are design plans in place to allow for the construction of two-family homes, which is permitted by the town on these lots. The Mylars, the map for the benefit of the, the public, the official filed map, has already been signed off by all of the required agencies. It's also been reviewed by the Town of Hempstead's map committee, which is basically an arm of the Department of Engineering, and the design for the, the potential homes, because nothing is, you know, officially written in stone, no building permit applications have been issued, but those designs have been approved as appropriate for these, these lots. So, these are, again, these are as-of-right lots. There are no variances that are required, none have been sought, and it really is a matter here solely of the planning power, and the, the criteria associated with the planning power have been met by the fact that the DPW and the Department of Health have both signed the map, and today, we're really just here to complete the hearing. I believe the adjournment was really to allow additional members of the public a chance to come down and ask questions or voice their concerns, but without...
All right, I want to thank you again for agreeing to the adjournment last time. We do have four people from the public here to speak on it. Mr. D'Agostino, I don't know if you want to add anything, or if you want to wait until we hear from the public?
No, I, I... So let me defer to Mr. D'Agostino, and of course, if you have additional questions, we'll answer them, but again, we'll, we'll rely on the record that we've already made at the prior proceeding.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the contract vendor, You &amp; Me Homes LLC. My name is Albert D'Agostino, Minerva &amp; D'Agostino, PC, one oh seven South Central Avenue, Valley Stream, New York. I, I, I have just a few comments, and there's a memorandum that I would like to submit for the record, a copy of which I've already provided to your counsel, Mr. O'Brien, as well as to Mr. Sally. We are obviously here in support of the application, and hopefully it will be approved this morning. However, just as a backdrop and for the record, and I'm relying on the fact that, notwithstanding the fact that you don't have a, a court reporter here that this is being recorded, I had mentioned last time, and I know it's a, a subject which I've often raised, it is my position, well, first of all, my client is and has been in, in contract on this property since before this filing, the contract goes back to, well, fifteen of the sixteen lots on this property. The contract goes back to August of two thousand and sixteen. I will just mention again that this property appears on a pre-January twelfth, nineteen forty-five map, that the sole purpose of altering the lots on, is it something I said? Not, not for the last time.
We, we're, we've heard the old file back...
No, you, you're really, you're really haven't.
I'm sure we'll hear it again.
Yeah, well, the law is absolutely crystal clear. It was and has been the law of, the, the state of New York, and it applies specifically to the county of Nassau under three thirty-four A of the Real Property Law, subdivision one B, that the applicant has the, and ultimately, my client has the absolute right to move the lot lines to conform to the applicable zoning. The applicable zoning has been addressed, reviewed, and rereviewed by the Town of Hempstead. That is the business X zone, which permits two-family residences on a twelve-thousand-square-foot lot. It has been reviewed on that basis and approved on that basis by the Department of Health of the county, as well as the map committee.
Counsel, I apologize for interrupting. May I ask on that point, though? Okay. So, the last hearing, we had it in the other room where we didn't have the technology, you know, it was a little bit hard to see things.
Yes.
But after members of the public were so surprised to hear that there were going to be two-family homes put on these lots, it took a little while for it to sink in for me as to the size of the lots. These are tiny lots. You, what's apparently happening here is, when you're saying that they're one-hundred percent zone compliant and such, is you're basing that on using the land that's under the water for each lot, which is kind of a, it's, it doesn't seem logical. What, what does the land that's underwater have to do with, with the billable lot? It seems to me how big the house is and it fits on the property should be based on the property that's above water.
Well, yes and no. First, as the commission is aware and has acknowledged in prior litigations, that the zoning authority here rests solely with the county, with the Town of Hempstead. The Town of Hempstead has interpreted and has always consistent, at least during my professional career, has always consistently included all property within the lot lines in order to determine the area of the lot. This has been so approved, and the map committee had rereviewed it on that basis. The map committee, and one minor correction to, to, at least to my opinion, as to what Mr. Brown said, the map committee is not only planning in the Town of Hempstead, it also includes the building department. That is well-established and has been well-established. The size of the houses, the houses are, are twenty-eight hundred square feet, consisting of two fourteen-hundred-square-foot apartments, side by side. As I said, all of that has been thoroughly reviewed by all other agencies having jurisdiction over that. Our position is, as the town's position is, that the lots are zoning compliant. This is not the first application that you've had before you where zoning has been determined by the zoning authority on that basis with respect to underwater land.
Well, I just, I, counsel, is that correct? So on that point, have we, have I voted on a case previously where the reason that was compliant with zoning was based on calculating underground land?
I don't have any recollection of cases, since I've been counseled to commission...
I have recollection.
Where specifically been said, but it wouldn't surprise me. I, you know, I understand that to be part of the calculation, from my ten years on the zoning board.
I remember a case on Winsome Avenue in America. I remember a case on Winsome Avenue in America. Right, Mr. D'Agostino, I think you represented the applicant, where part of it was the high-water mean line underwater. But be that as it may, nothing to the contrary withstanding, we had some requests of both you and co-counsel with respect to today's hearing. The first question...
All right, if you're gonna comment, you're gonna have to put it on the mic.
Now, the question I asked in the last meeting, Mr. D'Agostino is there, any way you could convert some of these two families into one family? Have you discussed it with your contract vendee? Is he here today to hear the proceedings?
My client is here today, and again, again, I thought you were going to ask me for a determination as to what the homes were going to look like, and that's, I brought a rendering. And going back, you know, before I even engage in that discussion, I would just repeat, there was a very recent litigation involving the commission, and I think Mr. Brown and I were involved in it, and the determination by the commission was an acknowledgement that the commission has no zoning authority. It's been determined. What is legal here is the use. It does not require any variances at the town of Hempstead, and the lot lines on the old filed map, which were probably 25 by 100 lot lines, may be moved pursuant to 334A 1B, and in my memo that I'm submitting, I reviewed the, went so far as to review the bill jacket in support, finding a letter from the sponsor, who was then an assemblyman from Rockwell Center, John Thorpe. There were letters in there from the county attorney's office, and representing that, the Nassau County Planning Commission had supported the change in the law, and the two litigations are, one of them was Pro Home Builders versus Jeffrey Age Greenfield, which was decided in 2008 in the Supreme Court, and by the appellate division in 2009, and then a matter that my office brought against the county clerk, matter of Capville Homes LLC versus Maureen O'Connell, and that was a 2018 case, which was defended by the county attorney. Counsel, you're gonna submit that for the record, right? But I want you to understand the full background here as to what, because I know you said you heard it before.
Well, I'm saying that we're gonna, we also have people from the public that are waiting to speak, so if it comes up...
Again, I just want it, I just want it clear that we're hoping for an approval today, and, but if not, it is our position that we're, we have the absolute right to...
But you're gonna make that a written submission, correct? Yes, okay.
I'm submitting to the record now a five-page...
Mr. D'Agostino, just a simple question, based upon the last meeting. Understanding, I spent 16 years as a zoning board chairman, I understand I'm not here in that role, did your client consider voluntarily following up to my request to convert one or more of these two-family homes to one family?
Mr. Chairman, if I, Mr. Vice Chairman, if I might, I'd like to let the public speak before I get back to that question, if you don't mind.
Thank you very much, Mr. D'Agostino.
Happy to yield to the public.
Thank you. All right. I have four members of the public signed up. Each will be allowed at three minutes. Michael Cepici, is that correct? I didn't get an "O" at the end of that, okay. Name an address for the record, please.
Michael Cepico, 3638 Somerset Drive. This is not real clear. Are they building just on the right half of the property, or is the whole property done? Because this is not, I can't even see that. Does anybody have a copy of this?
Do we have another view, Jazz?
Well, you can't see that. You can't see no copy of the lines on that.
All right, Mr. Cepico, while you're looking at that, I'm gonna call up the next speaker. You still have your three minutes.
I just wanted to state that 202,000 square feet is gonna remain as a marina. That is the southernmost portion of this property. The remaining north of the property will be subdivided into, they're proposing to subdivide into 15 two-family homes.
All right, let Mr. Cepico look at it. I have three other speakers. Ed Miller.
How you doing? Ed Miller, 3630 Somerset Drive. I don't see how you're gonna fit all these houses there with parking. I could see single-family, maybe six or seven. Also, the elementary school isn't gonna be able to handle it. I think there's five first-grade classes this year, so. I mean, there's maybe 10 houses to sell right now on Ocean Avenue that aren't selling. I mean, they're probably gonna end up being rented, or maybe zombie houses again, I don't know. In the summer, would everybody's boat slips, and their parking also. Right now, that part of the marina is parking for the southern half of the marina. So they're all gonna be parking in the street, and they're not gonna be able to, what are they gonna do? Where are you gonna park for these 15 houses? That property is not very deep. I don't see where they're gonna have grass, any kind of yard. And then all the way up north, that's an island. That's surrounded by water. No bulkhead, nothing. So, and also, there's a bunch of holes in the property now. They're trying to dig out for sewers. They can't do it, because it's underwater. So I don't know. I ain't gonna be able to handle that, but I would be okay with a few single-family houses. Maybe six. But that's just not gonna happen. It's not gonna fit.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Cepico, did you have your questions answered?
All right. I see their map that they have drawn now. They're calculating all that underwater land, which is, I guess, what you're discussing. I would have to see more information. I mean, there's nowhere to park here. You got approximately 75 cars can be parked here with 2.5 cars per family unit, which is not unreasonable. There wouldn't be enough room for parking, no less houses, in that. And are they allowed to rent the backwater space to boats and whatnot, which would increase more parking? You know what I mean? For people that take their boat out on Saturdays, Sundays, Mondays, whatever.
Mr. Brown, can you answer those questions, in terms of the parking sufficiency and the boat docks?
I can show this plan as well. Each of the units will have driveways.
Accommodating how many cars?
Showing on here, I would say up to three cars, and I believe each unit will have a garage, is it four cars and a garage?
Thank you.
Correct? Four cars, four cars, I'm told. All of the lots, as I said, yes, including some, all include some portion underwater, but all the lots are in excess of 12,000 square feet. All of the lots would have rear yards, okay? All the lots would have front yards. That's where the parking would be. So they're not, they're not on the lot lines. They, there are setbacks in the rear and on the sides. I think last time, there was some misconception that these would be attached houses. They're not attached houses. They're designed as two-family houses, as Mr. D'Agostino described, but separated, just as a single-family house would be. So they're not ignoring the zoning ordinance with respect to setbacks in the rear, on the sides, and in the front. They will have driveways, they will have rear yards, they will have side yards, and...
And you had a question about the boat slips as well.
I, about like people renting boat slips to, I, I mean, these are, I'm not aware that that would, these are, these are people's, you know, would be their private residents. I don't, I don't know if the town has rules about, you know, using your private docking for commercial purposes.
I think the question is really that there's no other variance that you're gonna do.
There's no...
If that's the way it's currently situated, you're gonna be in conformance with whatever the current laws.
Correct, and there's no, these, even though the property will remain business-zoned, but obviously residentially used, and when you have residential use in the business zone, then the requirements from the residential part of the code are transposed onto the business zone, if you understand what I'm saying. So you can't operate a business if you're, if you have, if you have developed the property for residential use. So this will be residential property, just like any, any other in the town. And just with respect to the issue of the 12,000 square feet, in the business zone, if you develop it for residential uses, a two-family use is permitted by right. The use is permitted by right. They do have an additional area requirement that you have 12,000 square feet, but it does, I think it's important to note that the use is allowed by right under the town of Hempstead building zone ordinance, and even if you're shy of 12,000 square feet, you can get an area variance to have a two-family house.
Yeah, I just wanted to be, address the concerns of the neighbor.
Yes, I understand. So, no, I don't believe there's any concerns about people renting boat slips in like a commercial fashion. The marina will remain in part, and the rest of it will be used for the ways we've described.
Right, thank you. Robert... Go ahead. I thought you did, sorry.
No, I'm sorry.
Mr. Cepico.
Okay. Well, I took a picture of it and I blew it up. So there are 50 by 100 lots of the two-family, each one. So that's 5,000 square feet, required is 12, dry land, I'm talking about dry land. So that's 5,000 square feet of them.
But I just want to be clear, we are not the zoning board here, so it's all zoning-compliant.
Okay.
Okay, there's no variances required here.
There's no variance required. In the town either?
No.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Bram, Robert Bram, name an address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Robert Bram, 3625 Somerset Drive, Seaford, New York. I spoke at the last hearing. The entire area that we live in, this entire area of Seaford, has always been single-family homes. It's been that way forever. I've been an owner here since 1986, pretty long time. And I just want to be clear, these are two-family homes, but I see the way it's set up. Are they two individual owners, or it's one owner with a tenant?
Whoever's got the answer for that. Hey, Mr. D'Agostino, you gotta go on the microphone when I don't have a stenographer. Each home is proposed to be a legal two-family home, and each one, it's, each one is going to be two side-by-side units.
He says he's asking about ownership.
Oh, I didn't finish. I was trying. In terms of owner occupancy, I think that was a subject of some litigation at the town of Hempstead, as to whether or not, well, I mean, we don't know what the market is going to bring. So if there's no prohibition or mandate that they be individually owned, or if somebody wanted to buy two or more...
No, I think what he's asking, are they gonna be sold as individual homes, or is it gonna be joint sale?
Oh, okay, no. Yes, absolutely separate titles, separate lots, absolutely, yes.
So continuing to my point is that there's going to be tenants in the other unit, which are not owners, potential for transient people coming in and out, renting for a year, six months.
Again, these are zoning issues that we don't have any control over.
I understand, but we're talking about the quality of life that we have down there, okay? People that can't afford to buy a home, and I'm no disparity against that, but are gonna be living in this other unit, and it's gonna be a different mindset. Tenants, I'm sorry to say this, do not typically care much about the home as the homeowner.
And whether we agree with you or not, and what I'm saying is, these are issues that need to be raised on the local level. We can't do anything about it here today.
Okay, so further to do, we're talking about, I still feel, and I agree with Mr. Greenfield, that there should be some more consideration of single-family homes there. I mean, if you go right around the other side of Siemens Lake Park, there's a beautiful community called the Crescent Cove, high-quality, single-family homes, and that helps with the appreciation of value to the area, and of course, taxes too. I'm in the mortgage business now 31 years, and I can tell you that under the guidelines, and I mentioned this the last time, that selling two-family homes becomes a lot more difficult because Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac, which is the governing bodies that lend the money to all the banks, to lend to the consumers, do not allow you to purchase a two-family home with less than 20% down, unless you're going FHA, government-backed funds. Single-family homes, you can go with 5% down, you're gonna get a better deal for your money, your rates are better, and you're gonna sell them better.
Well, I think that's a conversation you should have with Mr. D'Agostino's client. Okay?
That's what I'm trying to do through the system here.
Very good. Anything else that we didn't hear at the last?
I think I'm good.
Thank you very much. Diane Fedic, Fedic, name an address for the record, please.
Diane Fedic, 2830 Elmo Place, Seaford.
You can pull that mic down.
Yeah, it's all right. I've been to three hearings. The first one was 2017, and at 2017 hearing, me and one other person was here. I don't know how they're letting the public know in that area, but this is the third time I'm here, and there's only a minimal amount of people, so it's very discouraging. This area, I said in 2017, really requires a smaller scale of homes, and at that time, it was, as Mr. Greenfield said, okay, as Mr. Greenfield said, single-family homes is really what is needed there. To have all of a sudden, the last month, let us know that it's two-family homes, is really a disservice to us, because the first time we were discussing the single-family homes, and I said, can we just make it smaller? Haven't heard anything, two and a half years goes by, and suddenly, we're in the final subdivision. I'm really here for fact-finding, because I really don't think, my voice really has, has any say. There's two school buses, from what I understand, on that road, Ocean Avenue. There are about 100 homes, if you can see on the map, the overall map, the satellite map, there's about 100 homes in about five blocks south of where this area is. And I guess none of them were notified that this was gonna happen, that they're gonna be going past all these homes. And if you, you can see the whole, the whole area over there on the right, all those homes have to go up that one little street. And, and I don't, you know, I'm not stopping them from building, but why does it have to be two-family homes all of a sudden? Why can't it be single-family, keep the character of the area? And it's just unbelievable to me. What I wanted to know about was the same thing that was asked. Is one person buying the home? Is it a rental? It's just not...
They answered that. There's no restriction, and they can't forecast who's gonna buy it.
Well, I'm saying, why does it have to be two-family homes? Why is, why is it changing the character? Why can't it be one-family homes in a small scale, maybe 10 houses or eight houses?
Again, I gotta suggest the same thing that I suggested to Mr. Bram, speak with the developer, and that's all we can do.
Yeah, it's basically mute. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I do not have anyone else sign up from the public, not seeing or hearing it.
Mr. D'Agostino promised us an answer, following the public's comment with respect to my request.
Yes.
Echoed by the members of the public that we consider one or more one-family homes. Has your client, who's here, heard?
Yeah, I spoke with my client, and let me say just briefly, if there were one-family homes, they would only require 6,000 square feet, so potentially, depending on the layout of the site plan, you might end up with twice the number of single-family homes. But notwithstanding that, I've spoken with my client, and my client is willing to limit the use to the northernmost lot, which I think is lot 18, or, no, I'm sorry, it's lot, I can't read it either. 16? 16, lot 16, to a one-family residence. The others would be in accordance with the zoning, which is two. My client is willing, willing to limit the, that lot to a one-family home, yes. Well, then, it does pay off to come down for these public hearings, you'd get a concession. I'm sorry? No, I'm talking to the public here. Which case is this? It's not this one? Okay.
All right, so Counsel, I did ask some questions earlier. I think that, first of all, I respect the rule of law, and I understand your arguments, and your arguments are, if I could sum it up, and you could correct me if I get it wrong, that the authority to set the zoning is at the town level. We are a home-rule state in New York. The town has zoning in place. That zoning that's in place provides for this development, and that is the law. And we've held a hearing, we held a second hearing because of the concerns that were raised... raised. I've raised this question, that it, you know, it seems like a small lot to get a two-family home on it. We've seen the drawing that really doesn't look terribly out of character, which is good to have seen. And we asked a lot of questions. It does seem, however, that your point has to carry, that you're proposing something that is consistent with the rules. The town apparently spent a fair amount of time, I didn't even know they had a map committee that specially looks at things like this, and we're understanding that they spent a lot of time looking at it. It's not like they just sent it to us and it wasn't carefully reviewed. So I think we have to defer to their authority on deciding what is the zoning and two-family homes are permitted on these lots. So that's where I, is that correct in terms of my understanding of your argument?
Yes, but there was one other question, I think I had to come back to you with. Someone asked the question about the possibility of rental of boat slips. That will not happen. The boat slips will be, and any boat slips that are installed will be limited to the occupants of those homes on a separate lot basis. So one person can't let somebody else use boat slips in front of their lot.
I'd just like to be clear that since the meeting of February 13th, you amended it to include one single-family home? Or was that done previously?
No, 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 no. The question was raised, and it was under consideration. And we are willing, notwithstanding the fact that lot number 16 is two-family zoning compliant, we are representing that we will only build a single-family home on that property, and we have not amended anything. The map remains unchanged. The only thing that's different is, of course, I put my memo on the 334A 1B old file map exception. But that's a legal argument.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I do not have anybody else sign up from the public, not seeing or hearing anyone. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion on NCPC File Number 1989-F1. My motion is to approve the major subdivision application final map.
Also, with the bond and the escrow and inspection fee?
Yes, so that would be a submission of a bond in the amount of $603,757.24, with the cash escrow $20,734.76, and an inspection fee of $74,939.4.
Second.
Motion made in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Thank you.
Next case is NCPC File Number 1990-F3, map of Forest Place. This was also adjourned from our previous meeting on February 13th, 2020. This application was adjourned from our previous meeting to allow time for the applicant to get the Mylar signed by the Nassau County Health Department.
Was that done?
It was.
Okay. I don't see the attorney.
Andrew Filippozzi is here to speak on behalf of the applicant.
Name and address, Counselor.
Good morning, Andrew Filippozzi, Harris Bluman Archer, 445 Broad Hollow Road, Melville, New York. So we're here today, I'm here today on behalf of the applicant, seeking final subdivision approval of this subdivision. It's a two-acre parcel to be subdivided into eight lots with a right-of-way. The applicant has received approval from both the Village of Great Neck and the Village of Kings Point in 2016, and Nassau County Planning Commission preliminary subdivision approval in June of 2016. As Mr. Paracus mentioned before, we were on previously for final subdivision on February 13th, which was adjourned to allow for the final signature on the engineering plans from the Great Neck Water Pollution Control District and Nassau County Health Department signature of the map. Both of those have occurred and were submitted to Mr. Paracus and Nassau County DPW prior to this hearing.
Okay. I do not have anyone registered, signed up to speak, and I'm not seeing or hearing anyone. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move approval for the final subdivision of NCPC 1990-F-3.
Motion made.
Second.
Motion made in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Thank you. Thank you. 1994-F1.
This, that is the map of Heron Lane subdivision, located on Heron Lane in the Hamlet of Levittown, Town of Hempstead, Section 45, Block 257, Lots 34 through 36. On December 13th, 2018, this application received preliminary subdivision approval of a 2.23-acre parcel into nine single-family residential lots and a private roadway to be owned and maintained by Homeowners Association. That was conditioned on the Homeowners Association, excuse me, including language pertaining to no parking on the private right-of-way. The application also received a variance from the Nassau County Planning Commission regulations for the subdivision of land, Section VE18, which requires a statement from all applicable municipalities that all private streets comply with the applicable regulations. The proposed private roadway is 34, 35 feet, or 50 feet is required, and is proposing 30 feet paved width with 34 feet is required. A letter from the local fire department dated October 10th, 2018, states that they received and reviewed the subdivision map included that they will be able to service these properties and recommend that there will be no parking allowed on the south side of the street. The property is wholly located in the Hamlet of Levittown, Town of Hempstead, and not within 300 feet of another municipality. Subject property surrounded by single-family dwellings of the northeast, south, and vacant lot to the west. The development is located in Town of Hempstead's water district, Nassau County Sanitary Sewer District, and Levittown Union Free School District. The development's nearest nice bus route is the N-49, which runs along Route 106, and is closest to the Hicksville Long Island Railroad Station. Nassau County DPW, Nassau County Health Department, and Town of Hempstead approved the final subdivision map and engineering plans, including the grading and drainage plan. Nassau County Health Department also granted realty subdivision approval. The county will require a performance bond, cash escrow, and inspection fee to ensure the proper installation of all public improvements. Those numbers follow: bond or cash in lieu of $492,344.30, cash escrow of $17,289, and inspection fee of $61,156. This application did receive variances from Town of Hempstead for subdivision of lot front width from and on-street line for the first nine houses. Construct dwellings with two-car garage dwellings have insufficient access pursuant to 280A of New York State Town Law, and install six-foot-high fence forward of dwellings may not substantially obstruct light of sight. All those were granted by the Town of Hempstead Board of Appeals on November 15th, 2017. And Lisa Cairo is here to speak on behalf of the applicant.
Thank you. Morning, Counselor.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Thank you to Mr. Paracus for that outline of our request for final map approval today for this application, which, as Mr. Paracus explained, is located on Heron Lane in Levittown, Town of Hempstead. We have received certain variances from the town and also from the commission when we first appeared for preliminary map approval back in December of 2018. And unless the board, unless the commission has any questions, I would request that the final map approval be granted.
I, we didn't have any questions in the pre-meeting, I still know questions. We have no one to sign up, signed up. Is anyone here to speak on this application? Not hearing or seeing anyone, we'll entertain a motion at this time.
Mr. Chair, move approval of the final, oh, sorry.
He's got to vote, he's got to write back.
You have to wait for him?
We're going to make the motion, yeah.
So we did. No, it's better right.
Jazz, you want to put up the drawing of this? Thank you.
Do you want me to wait or no? Okay.
Make a motion, please.
Mr. Chair, I move approval for the final subdivision of NCPC File 1994-F-1, conditioned on the HOA agreement, including language concerning no parking on the proposed private right-of-way, the submission of bond or cash in lieu of $492,344.30, cash escrow of $17,289, and inspection fee of $61,156.
Second.
Motion made in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Minor subdivision, NCPC 27-2018.
The first minor subdivision case is an extension of time. This was 27-2018. The applicant is the County of Nassau as well as Breezy Hill Group. The subject property, the site location, I'm sorry, is 970 Brush Hollow Road in Newcastle, Westbury Postal Code in the Town of North Hempstead, Section 11, Block 504, Lot 7. The subject property was seen by the commission as an OSPEC case number 1, 2016. The commission resolved ununanimously on December 15th, 2016, to recommend that the legislature approve the release of the subject property without condition. The direct sale ordinance was approved by the Nassau County Legislature. The 8.46-acre subject property is situated on the northeast corner of Brush Hollow Road in the Hamlet of Newcastle. The application proposes to subdivide the property into two parcels, 2.205-acre parcel to be owned by contract vendee, and the remaining 6.252-acre parcel, which includes a recharged basin to be retained by Nassau County. On June 22nd, 2018, the Town of North Hempstead issued a zoning compliance letter for the proposed two parcel subdivision. Again, this was originally heard back on July 19th, 2018 by the Planning Commission and was approved. It is before us today for an extension of time to file the deeds. The resolution was signed July 30th, 2018. The new date of filing will be extended and must be completed by July 30th, 2020. Here to speak on the application is Kevin Walsh.
Good morning again, Commissioners. Kevin Walsh, New Office of Real Estate Services. As Jazz mentioned, this is an extension of time. This was a property, Brush Hollow Road, that we transferred, actually closed, I believe, late December 2018. County sold a lot that was a former warehouse building utilized by the police but retained a storm basin, still an active storm basin that's over by the vicinity of Brush Hollow Road with the parkways, Wantaw, Northern State. For whatever reasons, the deed, Clerk's Office had an issue with the deeds, so now we just need an extension of time to file the deeds. They've been corrected, I understand, and we closed already, just a matter of getting the deeds recorded.
Are we talking about April 2nd, or you need longer? That's our next meeting.
I'd like to extend, I think it was one year that expired. Last year, extension to end of July, I believe Jazz mentioned, would be acceptable. We should be able to record by then.
So our last meeting before then would be July 16th.
That should be fine.
Okay.
So question, what we're seeing on the screen here, is this the property as it currently exists, or are you saying that you closed on breaking off a piece of the, should there be a line shown here as to what was changed?
Um.
Is that the line there?
I'm not sure if that's the most current. I believe it is.
So, can you, Marty, can you change the thing? So that's what it was, it's not showing what it will be. The next slide did have the site plan, it's kind of blurry to see where the line is actually being proposed. So it's basically cutting off where the warehouse is.
And it would be a fence or something to make clear where the county property begins?
I've actually been to the site, it's been a while, but there had been a fence, actually, that obviously the basin is fenced then, and the property, actually, the bear, the building itself had also had fencing, has been utilized by PD.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to extend the time to file till July 16th, 2020.
So moved at the negative dick.
Motion made. I need a second.
Second.
Motion made in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, 50-2018.
50-20-
Also an extension of time.
50-2018, the applicant is 123 Roosevelt Incorporated. Site location is in, is the east side of Denton Place, Section 50, Block 462, Lots 1 and 2. The 8,518-square-foot area subject property is situated on the east side of Denton Place, beginning approximately 93 feet north of Meirin Avenue in the Hamlet of Roosevelt in the Town of Hempstead. The application proposes to subdivide the property into two irregular parcels. The Town of Hempstead Zone of Board, Zoning Board of Appeals has granted the request for variances, variances of subdivision of lot, lot area, front yard setback on Harriet Avenue, and to construct dwelling, case number 349/18, and variances for subdivision of lot, lot area, front width from and on-street line to front setback line and construct dwelling, case number 350-18. This is for an extension of time. The application was heard originally on October 18th, 2018, and was approved. The applicant is requesting an extension of time because when the deeds were filed within the proper time period, they were filed incorrectly, and the Clerk's Office is requesting an extension of time. Here to speak on the application is Tim Donahue.
Mr. Donahue, you name an address for the record.
Timothy L. Donahue, 295 West 23rd Street, Deer Park, New York. The project is really complete, just a matter of switching the deeds, and it's finished. So I'm looking for some more time.
Generally, Jazz, this is the first request?
Yes.
So we only go generally six months on these requests, right?
Yes, but it was, the deeds were filed within the proper time period, it's just that they were filed incorrectly. So the Clerk's Office is asking for an extension of time so that way they can-
Go to the microphone for this.
If I may just join in, what happened here is the deeds, the attorney wasn't involved in the recording of the deeds. The attorney who represented the applicant at the hearing, there was an expediter who took over, and apparently there were errors in the deed. The county clerk raised the issue. Now, Mr. Sally and I took the position that, since it was, that the time was made, that all they needed to do was file correction deed, which wouldn't involve the commission. However, the county clerk took the position, we need a resolution from the Planning Commission, and therefore this gentleman was willing to come back.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, we generally don't grant extensions beyond six months.
Six months.
So this is, unless I'm mistaken, seven, April, May, June, July, August, okay, September 12th.
So you're right. Right, so you can give it to September 12th.
September 12th, okay.
So the title-
September 10th, I'm sorry.
My question, Counsel, Mr. O'Brien, didn't the title company file the deeds?
Apparently an expediter filed the deeds, or someone, someone other than the attorney who was involved, because I think Mr. Brown or his office were involved, it would have been done properly.
Okay. Okay. So a motion to extend the time to file till September 10th, 2020.
Second.
So moved, second.
So just to point a clarity, it'd actually be a re-filing because the deeds were filed within the-
Right, right, okay.
Revised filing.
Motion made in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, 10-2020.
Minor subdivision filed 10-2020, the applicant is KDS Homes Incorporated. Site location, 51 Walter Avenue in Hicksville, New York, 11801, in the Town of Oyster Bay, Section 46, Block 632, Lot 26. The 32,568-square-foot area subject property is situated on the south side of Walter Avenue in the Hamlet of Hicksville. in the Hamlet of Hicksville in the town of Oyster Bay. The application proposes to subdivide the property, which has 100 feet, 150 feet of frontage on Walter Avenue into two parcels. Proposed parcel one will have 75 feet of frontage by 217.01 feet, a total of 16,280.11 square foot area parcel. Proposed parcel two will have 75 feet of frontage by 217.24 feet, a total of 16,288.84 square foot area parcel. The town of Oyster Bay Board of Zoning Appeals has approved the request for variances for the proposed subdivision. Parcells one and two, variances to construct new dwellings on subdivided lots, having, each having less width of lot than permitted by ordinance, decision number 19-504 and 19-505. Here to speak on the application is Thomas Abate.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board for the applicant, Tom Abate, A-B-B-A-T-E. I'm an attorney with offices at 88 Sunnyside Boulevard in Plainview. Ms. Paz gave it to you very succinctly and very directly. Walter Avenue, just to orient yourselves, is south of Old Country Road, west of South Oyster Bay Road. The only relief we needed before the town of Oyster Bay Zoning Board of Appeals was the lot width. You have to hold 80 in the town's R-110 zone. We were holding 75. That is only a 6% deviation, mitigating in favor of the grants that we received in December 2019 from the board, with the fact that even after subdivided, these will be substantially oversized for the zone. In the R-110, you have to have a minimum 10,000 square feet. Each of these will be over 16,000 square feet. We meet all of the front, rear, side yard setback requirements. In fact, we exceed them. In the R-110, you have to hold a 30-foot front yard. We're at 50 feet. Your rear yard has to be not less than 25 feet. We've got 122-foot rear yard setback. We're allowed a 20% lot coverage in the R-110 zone. Here, these houses will only have 12%. So, for those reasons, this town of Oyster Bay granted the application, and we're here before you this morning. That concludes my comments.
Thank you, Counsel. I have one person signed up from the public, Roy Tringali. Tringali. Name and address for the record, Mr. Tringali.
Good morning, my name is Roy Tringali, 1148 Walter Avenue, Hicksville. This property is right in front of my house. I see it every day. It's a beautiful piece of property. Walter Avenue is unique in Hicksville. They call it Hicksville Gardens. So, what I'm opposed to is two homes with at least four cars parked in, and it interrupted the mystique of Walter Avenue. Such a beautiful, I get so many compliments how beautiful the property is. So, I'm opposed, I'm opposed to the building two homes. I'm also a member of the Hicksville Gardens Civic Association for 35 years. So, I know Hicksville. So, this plan right now is going to upset the scenery in Hicksville. I can just picture four cars in the street. Right now, no, there's no cars parked in the street. It's everybody in their driveway, and it's going to be more traffic, going to probably have two driveway cuts in the driveway. And so, the end result, I'm opposed to two houses.
Thank you, Mr. Tringali.
Thank you.
Mr. Abate, did you want to add something?
I do. I didn't mention to you at the outset that, in addition to having the largest privately held lot, we're also substantially oversized as compared to our neighbors. Mr. Tringali does look right at our property. He only has 70 feet of lot width instead of 80. We have 75. He only has 7,000 square feet of lot area, where he's supposed to have 10,000 square feet. We're holding 16,000 square feet.
I understand you got the variances.
Correct, yes. Thank you.
Was this some kind of a celebrity's house or something? This is quite a piece of property that this one home was sitting on.
Yeah.
Or is currently sitting on.
Doesn't look like a celebrity's property anymore. It's vacant and it's run down, but yeah. It abuts the Holy Trinity Greek Orthodox Church. We're surrounded pretty much by the church, as you can see from the aerial there.
In many respects, given how big it is, the neighbor should be happy that it's not a three-lot subdivision. Of course, you really couldn't get access to three lots here, but I mean, you've got 217-foot depth here. This is quite a big piece of property.
Very big piece of property. And Mr. Shustari, who's my client with me today, he could have been creative with an engineer to try to figure out three lots, but he's doing what's right for the neighborhood, what's appropriate. I'm proud of him.
Yeah, we're not making any encouragements here. So, okay, I don't have anybody else signed up for the public, not seeing or hearing anyone. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move for approval with a neg deck of NCPC File 10-2020 that was approved by the town of Oyster Bay Board of Zoning Appeals.
Second the motion.
Motion made second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried.
Thank you.
Minor subdivisions, thank you.
Thank you.
We're in the homestretch, folks. You know what? Why don't we do this first, Jas, since we do have a lot of people here? Why don't we do the 13-2020 first?
Okay.
So, we can get the public out of here. Not that I, we don't like a crowd, but you've been sitting here for a while, and normally we would have done zoning last, but we had a quorum issue, so, okay?
13-2020, applicants BH-SIR LLC. Site location, 3 Hazel Road, Port Washington, New York, 11050, in the town of North Hempstead, Section 5, Block 116, Lots 672 to 677. The 14,155.99 square foot area subject property is situated on the corner of Hazel Road and Briar Cliff Drive in the Hamlet of Port Washington in the town of North Hempstead. The application proposes to subdivide the property, which has frontages on both Hazel Road and Briar Cliff Drive into two parcels. Proposed parcel one, which is the interiormost lot, will have 69 feet of frontage on Briar Cliff Drive, a total of 6,907.39 square foot area parcel. Proposed parcel two, the cornermost triangular lot, will have 104 feet of frontage on Briar Cliff Drive, a total of 7,248.6 square foot area parcel. The town of North Hempstead has issued a letter of zoning compliance signed by Anthony Riguzio on November 19, 2019, for the proposed subdivision. The application is considered as of right. Here to speak on the application is Bruce Migetz.
Good catch on the date, Jas. Counselor?
Good morning. For the applicant, Bruce W. Migetz, with the law firm, Albany Eastern Albany, 1050 Franklin Avenue, Garden City, New York. As Ms. Paz has described, the size of the lots and the frontage, they comply with the North Hempstead zoning code. In fact, they far exceed what the code requires. This property is in a residence B zone, which requires a 6,000 square foot lot, and it requires, based upon average frontage within 200 feet for these parcels, the average comes out to be 68.65. The two lots exceed both the area and the lot frontage requirements. One lot is 907 feet in excess of the minimum, the other lot is 1,248 feet in excess of the minimum. Street frontage 69 on one, 104 on the other, again, exceeds the zoning code. They're also in-
Counselor, could I just ask the, clarify what you just said in regards to the image we see on the screen? So, you're saying it's 100, each of the lots are 100 wide, but one is shaped like a triangle, so it's a little hard to see how they both have what you just described in terms of meeting the requirement?
No, the, you're talking about street frontage?
No, lot size.
Yeah, the frontage first, and then the depth.
Well, it's right on the survey that's before you. The frontage for the interior lot is 69 feet, and the area is 6,907 square feet. The frontage on the interior lot, if you look up to the north of that, the top of that lot, you see 69 feet. That's the frontage. It's uniform frontage for that lot.
What street is the second lot fronting on?
Hazel. No, I'm sorry, they're both front on Briar Cliff, but the corner lot fronts on Briar Cliff and Hazel. But the frontage is taken on, by the town, is taken on Briar Cliff, and that frontage is 104 feet. And that area, it says right on the survey, 7,248.60 square feet.
So, where we see that number 11964, that's referring?
Well, that ref-
Marty?
It's a little confusing. If you look at those arrows, that's referring to, that length is actually-
Going around the bend?
Well, then, then you have to go halfway around the bend, which is another 15 feet. So, you add 88 feet to half the bend, which is 15 feet, and you get your 103 and a fraction.
Oh, that's Briar, that's this, right?
This is Briar Cliff.
Okay.
So, he's saying from here to here, you have 65. I just don't see why that's not identified on them. So, I'm just saying, normally, if it's, when you say it has the 65, I would see a point on this drawing where it says 65, but I don't see that.
As far as excess of that, if you see the-
Can you just point me to what number on this drawing supports what the frontage requirement?
You're talking for the corner lot? Okay. You see the length, 88.98 feet?
Yes.
Okay. That right there satisfies it, but the town actually added in another 15 feet, half of the curve. But the, that one length, 88.98, is far in excess of 65.
All right, thank you. All right, let's hear, we have very patient members of the public that have been waiting. I'd like to hear from them.
Sure.
Leon Gewab, is that correct? There's Lisa as well, I want to get this right.
Lisa's my wife, but I think she's going to get up and speak on her own behalf.
Yeah, but I was asking if I got your name correct?
Yes, yes. Thank you very much.
Name and address for the record, then.
Leon Gewab, 7 Briar Cliff Drive, Port Washington, New York. Mr. Chairman and Commission members, I'm here with many of my neighbors. If you can raise your hands, please. I also have petitions from 17 other of my neighbors, signed petitions from people who are here, many of whom could not be here today because of their concerns about the coronavirus, all in opposition to this subdivision. As you can see, the, first, as one of the committee members said, this is very confusing. I have never, we've been living at Briar Cliff Drive for over 40 years. I've never seen a triangular house anywhere in our neighborhood, and I deeply feel that this, a home of this sort will negatively impact the property values in our area.
Mr. Gewab, what, Marty?
Yes, it's, yes, it is, it is. I've, yes, it is. I've looked at the drawing plans in, at North Hempstead, the plans that are going through for the, for the building permit, and they do show a triangular living space, not living spaces, but the foundation.
So, because there was, there was compliant, there was no local hearing on this subdivision? Is that correct, Counsel?
That's correct.
Okay.
So, you're doing it as of right, without a zoning measure?
No, he did get a variance.
Without a variance?
On a frontage.
No variance.
Oh, no? Okay.
Okay. It's still confusing in odd shape. Secondly, the Briar Cliff Drive is a very narrow street, and as you can see, I mean, it is a corner, but really, it's a wishbone corner. That angle is probably, I don't know, 25, 35 degrees, I'm not sure. There's a lot of congestion on Briar Cliff Drive, many cars parked on both sides of the street. On a regular day, it's a bit of an obstacle course to get cars through that narrow street. I do have an exhibit, and I apologize for not submitting these earlier so that they could have been displayed on the, on the video. This one, which I will submit for the record, shows a garbage truck coming by my car and missing it by fractions of an inch. Adding another home on this property will exacerbate the problem by adding more cars, more traffic, additional driveway with cars exiting and entering on this relatively blind corner, whereas of even right now, it is difficult if you come down Briar Cliff or Hazel. The visibility to see cars, children, and people coming from the opposite street is very difficult, and additional home on that corner will negatively impact the safety of that, of that spot. Storm water and rain, storm runoff is also a problem. The, this parcel, the property is high on Hazel, comes down onto Briar Cliff, and then down below onto the homes beneath Briar Cliff Drive. As it is right now, every time it rains, I have to go out, clear the debris from the gutter, down to the catch basin. If I don't, the water runs over my driveway, and even sometimes up over the curb. I have an exhibit showing that as well, which I'd like to submit for the record, and I'm concerned that additional improvements or structures on the property, the additional driveway on that corner on Briar Cliff Drive, will exacerbate that drainage problem and cause more erosion to the homes on Briar Cliff Drive.
Jas, where's the existing curb cut? Is that on Briar Cliff now? Okay.
But both, both homes, both of the new homes, the additional cut-
Yeah, it'll be one additional curb cut. I just didn't know, one was on one road and one was on the other.
On Briar Cliff, yes, correct.
Right, correct.
Fourth, we have a school bus stop right there on the intersection of Briar Cliff and Hazel Drive. Again, additional traffic, more cars, more cars parked on the block, additional cars exiting and entering from the new driveway. We have probably a dozen active, energetic elementary school children waiting on that corner for the bus stop every day. I'm concerned for their safety.
So, let me ask you, which is wider, Hazel or Briar Cliff? Do you know?
In my estimation, it would be Hazel, yes.
Okay. Counselor, is there any chance that one of these homes could have their curb cut on Hazel instead of Briar Cliff? Counselor?
No, not, not in order to comply with the town's zoning code, which we have done. The houses will be laid out with two curb cuts on Briar Cliff.
I understand that's why, I'm just looking at the setback. It looks like it's equidistant on both sides. I'm wondering if you couldn't do it on the Hazel side, as opposed to putting an additional cut? Right, it fronts both streets, correct?
Give me one second. I'm told by my client that it also has to work with the different elevations of the property, and therefore, it's necessary to have both curb cuts on Briar Cliff. I would point out that the curb cuts are within the purview of the town North Hempstead Highway Department. They would make a determination whether or not those curb cuts are-
No, I understand. I was just asking if it was considered at all?
Yeah.
Given the concerns raised?
We can't, we can't do that, unfortunately.
Okay. Mr. Gewab, anything else?
Yes. Lastly, last point. These properties at 3 Hazel Drive, plus the subdivision, all belong to the Menhasset Bay Estates Association, which contain deeded covenants in all of those properties. Should any of the plans for these structures violate one or more of those covenants, we will act to enforce them and make sure that they are abided to. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Gewab? Had I known, I would have let you go on first.
That's okay. I'm actually speaking, I'm actually speaking for my next-door neighbor, Bart Davis.
And he didn't leave an address for the record?
My, my name is Lisa Gewab, 7 Briar Cliff Drive, Port Washington, New York, and Bart Davis lives at 5 Briar Cliff Drive, directly opposite the plan in- And Bart Davis lives at five Briar Cliff Drive, uh, directly opposite the planned new development at three Hazel. Um, and for health reasons, um, again, um, in light of the situation, um, he was unable to be here, so he asked me to speak. Um, so this is really coming from both of us, but, um, as he says, he's met Ed, the gentleman who seeks to divide what has always been a single-family lot. We have lived in our house for forty-three years. It's always been a single-family lot. And he has lived there for twenty-five years. Um, I wish him no discomfort, Ed, and I understand his desire to maximize the profit on this project. But therein lies the problem. What he proposes does not reflect the needs or desires of the community in which he does not live and will not reside. Ours is a very old community with old homes. Both Briar Cliff Drive and Hazel Road are very, very narrow streets, connected as the wishbone, as you see on the, um, uh, on the board there, leading to a dead end. Briar Cliff Drive is the narrower, is absolutely the narrower. And more than one car parked on the street makes it impossible for another to be parked. This often blocks, uh, garbage trucks, highway department vehicles, fire trucks, emergency vehicles, and school buses from getting through. Um, I counted the number of, of children on this one little section, uh, just the wishbone section going up to the, to the bus stop yesterday. I personally did that, and there are fifteen preschool and elementary school-aged children walking that little area there, and then other children going, um, down toward the dead end. More than once, we have all had the unpleasant and dangerous driving experience of having to back up all the way down the street into the larger LaCure Road to let a car or truck pass. In addition, the proposed, proposed plans do not show that our homes are built on a descending hillside. There are several homes which do not have garages or have driveways so steep that they are not usable during severe weather, snow, ice, or other winter conditions. Turn, town snowplows are never able to plow to parallel lanes and are usually reduced to one, congested at that. We have snow on our street longer than any other part of town. It is dangerous and difficult all winter simply to drive home should inclement weather strike. In addition, the height of the new houses on the triangle will significantly affect visibility in that area, um, of vehicles coming from both, um, streets, uh, not being able to see, uh, people, other vehicles, um, and, uh, children, um, when coming into the wishbone corner. Um, that, the, the, um, height is quite high, as proposed. First, you may be certain that the proposed subdivision of the, uh, property to build a second house will exacerbate these problems. The subdivision means more people, more cars, more traffic, more driveways. Two double driveways coming out on our little Briar Cliff Drive, uh, in, in that little section there, two double driveways, leading to two car garages.
Just a quick question, if you know. I'm just curious, and counsel, maybe you have the answer. What, what is the difference in elevation? Because I've heard it a couple of times now. And I assume we're talking between Hazel and Briar. There's a difference in elevation?
Oh, yes, yes. And they're building the house as, the house is as high up as they possibly can.
I get it. I mean, that's something that we don't see on the drawings, so that's why I'm asking the question.
Yeah, unfortunately, we did not, we've never been here before. We're just community members, and we did not know that we could, you know, attach all these kinds of, um, of drawings. So if we had known, we certainly would have had them. Uh, second, it seems clear—
Hold on a second. John or Jazz, can we get a street view if you have it?
Should I continue or?
Sorry.
Okay. Second, it seems that clear that erosion, drainage, snowmelt, and stormwater runoff will negatively impact Briar Cliff Drive by changing the grade to accommodate the proposed subdivision. Uh, to my knowledge, no study has been done to date to ensure that all properties on Briar Cliff facing and below the proposed new homes will be free from water peril or flood-type conditions by eliminating what was open ground and adding a, a second driveway, as well as, I think, uh, it's not clear, but it looks like they are also going to widen, um, the, uh, other driveway. Um, so we'll have two new, basically two new driveways there, uh, double driveways. Also, we believe that the current two small storm drains are inadequate to handle proposed new conditions. Third, we are a community that values the individuality of our homes within a general consistency of style. It's a neighborhood of brick and slate and copper. The proposed triangular house cannot but be seen as an effort to squeeze in a house that is not in keeping with our neighborhood, as well as a dangerous inconvenience on an overcrowded lot. It will be an eyesore that can negatively, negatively affect property values. Uh, note that the edge of the, uh, drawing is owned by the town of North Hempstead. So that's not all property that can be developed or counted in the numbers that you are calculating. Fourth, we love that our children can play in the street, and the school bus stop is adjacent to the proposed second house. The proposed subdivision will mean additional traffic congestion and pose a danger to them. This is unwelcome and unacceptable. Fifth, should the proposed subdivision violate any aspects of the MBEA covenant to which we are all a party, we are obligated to support legal action to enforce them and will seek legal remedy if they are ignored. And I know that's not the purview of this commission, so we're not going into that now. In short, it is possible to build one beautiful, single-family home on the property, and that effort will be welcomed by all. It is our sincere wish that Ed have a positive experience in our community. And I'm certain he will want to be welcomed by folks whose needs and feelings he has taken into consideration. I ask that this planning commission do the same and deny the plans to subdivide the property at three Hazel Road. Thank you so much for your time.
Counselor, you, you talked about the building envelope, but has the, the homes been approved already?
The applications are pending with the building department. And, uh, to our knowledge, uh, they have been designed so that they meet code. We, uh, wanted to avoid variances because we wanted to avoid what we're hearing today. These comply with the code. I would say that—
Well, when you say complies with the code, I mean, you, you, you haven't gotten the, the building permits yet for what you're looking to build.
Mr. Chairman, uh, I think the, uh, appearance here today is premature. We traditionally ask if they're zoning compliant and if we have a letter that they're zoning compliant. I, for one, feel uncomfortable. I am not prepared to vote on an application based upon a maybe so. We have a letter from them saying that?
Yes.
So how's it pending? That's where you confuse the—
The question was the plans for the house.
Oh, the plans?
Plans for the building permit. The building permit is pending. There's a letter of zoning compliance for this, for this subdivision. I, I, you know, I would point out, you know, to reply to the comment that one house would look great here. This is a six thousand square foot zone. This property is fourteen thousand, six hundred and thirty-eight square feet. That is out of character with the community.
We had today's agenda where they only put in one home on a property. Anything is possible.
Possible, but I point out that Mr. and Mrs. Giewab's house is on a substandard lot, five thousand four hundred square feet in a six thousand square foot zone. And the Davis house for whom Mrs. Giewab spoke is also noncompliant, five thousand six hundred square feet. These houses are in excess of the required six thousand square feet. Half of the lots within a two-hundred-foot radius are six thousand square feet or less. We are more than six thousand square feet. Twenty-one of the thirty-four lots within two-hundred feet are smaller than both lots that we are proposing. So our lots are definitely in character with the community.
The other question is, she makes a good point about the two parallel driveways next to each other. With respect to the layout and design of the house, if it was flipped in such a manner that we didn't have two competing curb cuts next to each other, I can see that being a problem, yeah, with respect to the, uh, uh, street that's already maybe a problem.
Well, as we said, the, the topography slopes up from Briar Cliff to Hazelwood. There would be tremendous, uh, excavations, tremendous retaining walls that probably would not meet code. The town has strict limits on that. That's really not a feasible alternative. And there is, there's a hundred and fifty-one point nine three feet of total frontage. These other houses have sixty feet of frontage.
Question the frontage. I understand and respect what you're saying on the frontage.
But, Mr. Vice Chairman, you have these lots, your lots are sixty feet. So within a hundred and twenty feet, you have two curb cuts throughout that neighborhood.
Yeah, but they're competing right next door to each other.
It's no closer. You, you, all these houses, look, look, look at the radius map. Look at Mr. Giewab.
Some of that will be addressed with the building permit anyway.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Okay. I just wondered if there was an alternative since the good neighbor, uh, brought that up.
Uh, not, not a feasible alternative.
Okay. As long as that was explored, I, I'm, I'm fine with that answer.
Okay.
Next.
My question was piggybacking somewhat to that. I heard a lot about the rectangular shape for the lot, rectangular shape for the triangular, sorry. It changes the configuration. Perhaps that was a solution that you considered. I'm not certain. But are there any other solutions, uh, relative to this rectangular shape?
Well, you have to get a variance. Uh, the town has—
Triangular.
Beg your pardon?
No, he's just clarifying.
You were correcting me. I said triangular, but it's, uh, rectangular.
You would—
I know, I know, I know.
If you're talking about the corner lot, there's always problems with corner lots because you have, in the zoning code, a primary and secondary front yard setback. So you have to comply with two front yards. That's shown on the survey.
No, no, I, I understand that, but I think that the neighbors were saying that it's out of character with the community. So I was wondering, even though you have this shape, what other kind of solutions are there? Or are there no other solutions to this?
Well, what's out of character? The, the, the style of the house? That's, with all due respect, this is not Architectural Review Board, nor does North Hempstead have an Architectural Review Board.
Nor was that my question. It was in response to a resident who mentioned the shape and that the shape, I thought, they were saying was out of character with the community. So my question was solely for that. Is it totally out of character?
If you can put the radius map up there, if you look, there are two other corners on this, Hazelwood, LaCure, LaCure, and Briar Cliff. They are also shaped triangly, just like the subject property is.
Okay, all right. I, I, we, I do have three more people. Yep. Uh, Yvette Wright? Please put your name and address on the record.
Can we ask people to stick to our three-minute limit because I have to go to a meeting I'm late for? Thank you.
This is quick. My name is Yvette Wright. I live at sixteen Briar Cliff Drive. Um, just very quickly, uh, reiterating what everyone else has said. The triangular house has no backyard either. And, um, we are a neighborhood, everyone has a backyard. I think it, it changes the whole fabric of our community. We, you know, we all pride ourselves on our homes, and then, like other people were saying too, you have this triangle in front of you. It's going to block when you make the turn. A lot of people turn around on that corner. I did have one picture of the corner, if you wanted to see. It was actually the corner itself, but I don't know if it's up there. Um, I also think it's increased traffic. And, uh, the other thing I had wanted to say was that on February twenty-sixth, without any permit to do so, someone was in the property digging already, like, looked like they were trying to make foundations, where they do not have the permits to do it yet. They only had a demolition permit, and they're already not following the rules. So what makes you—
Did you go to the town?
Yes, I did, and an inspector went out and made them stop working. Now, if they start doing this already, what makes you think that they're going to follow whatever rules are put in front of them? They're also not following Menhasset Bay Estates covenants, but that, I know that's not your issue. But that's also part of this whole thing. But really, it, it was kind of annoying that they start digging and they're not supposed to. So, thank you.
You got them to stop?
Yes, but they did try again. Someone else had to call, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Annette, uh, Casale, Casally? Castle, sorry.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, thank you. Uh, I think I'll probably be redundant, but I have—
I need your name and address for the record.
Oh, twenty-five Briar Cliff Drive, and the last name is K.A.S.L.E. And I'll probably be somewhat redundant, and, and I want to save you some time. My two major iss— I've lived, my husband and I have lived on the block for thirty-eight years. Um, it is a dead-end block, so it means that, um, children are more likely to be out playing. Um, also, the block, um, LaCure is the, is the turn onto the block. It is a blind corner, um, turning onto Briar Cliff off of LaCure. Everybody has to be really careful to make sure that they're not, um, going to hit anybody. Um, and also where that corner is, where that wishbone is, you always have to stop and look to make sure that you're not going to interfere with other traffic. Um, so safety is a, is a major issue, um, especially with another driveway on the block. The block is very narrow, um, and that also affects some of the visibility. Um, and, uh, there have always been single-family residences on this block. I think, um, to, to use an expression that you used before, I think this would be an over-intensify, uh, over-intensification of development for our block. Um, and, and in addition, the Menhasset Bay Estates Association, um, is all single-family homes on their lots. And I know this is a single-family home, but it's, they're all similar types of buildings. So with that, I just wanted to, um, um, argue that this would be, um, a safety and character of the neighborhood issue.
Thank you. Uh, last person I have signed up is Derek Whalen. Mr. Whalen, name and address for the record.
Derek Whalen, thirteen Briar Cliff Drive. Um, we, we moved here about three years ago, and, uh, it was probably like top of our budget. But the main reason we moved there were the aesthetics of the street, the dead-end nature of the street, quiet community. Uh, we live right, basically kitty-corner to that, that, uh, the lot in question. Um, and that area is pretty much where all the kids converge to play. Part of that lot, as was mentioned before, is town and North Hempstead, um, property. So it's actually not, that's not reflective of the accurate, uh, dimensions of the lot. Um, basically, all the kids play there because it's the biggest part of the, of the street. So there's literally dozens of kids out there, two of which are mine, one and three, hanging out there all the time. If you go down Briar Cliff or Hazel, right now, the house is set back all the way towards the, I guess that's the north end of the property. So you're able to look over your right shoulder or left shoulder, depending on where you're coming down, to see cars approaching. It's still not, you know, perfect visibility, but it's just bushes blocking it. Now we're putting up the, uh, you know, Port Washington's version of the Flatiron Building.
Are there stop signs on the corner?
No, there are not. So we're putting up the, the triangular building, which will afford no visibility whatsoever. And I'm already watching close calls. Haven't had an accident there, but I've narrowly missed hitting some of my neighbors. Um, and that's when I'm going ten, fifteen miles an hour, just because I know the area. If you don't know the area, like UPS, FedEx, Amazon, whoever, they fly down that thing. And putting this thing here is just going to literally obstruct all the views. Um, I also want to mention, so that, we were talking about the drop-off. If you look at some of those views from Briar Cliff looking up, you're only seeing the second story of the homes on Hazel. The drop-off, for instance, on my home at Briar Cliff, my basement's above-grade. We've had water runoff. Our backyard's basically a swamp with the runoff that we have right now anytime it rains. We had to redo our driveway just to fix it and raise it four inches so that the runoff didn't affect us. So Leon's house is probably going to be flooded with the dual runoff of two additional homes and four additional cars. Um, I guess in closing, they, this is a builder coming in looking purely motivated by profit. Um, and it's, it's at the expense of me and all my neighbors who are here and the seventeen people that signed the petition, so I'd like you to consider that. Um, and, and essentially, uh, you know, that, that's all I got to say, really.
Sir, one thing that's different, unlike some of the older homes built, Nassau County Department of Health requires, uh, that there'll be, uh, uh, drywells installed on these, uh, drainage— Department of Health requires that there'll be drywells installed on these drainage from the roof to retain four inches of water on site. And that's county ordinance that's been in effect and the health department enforces that with the filing. So that, a DPW requirement, I'm sorry. So that might not make it as bad as what you're forecasting.
Sure. Yeah, my main concern is, is the triangular lot with the kids playing there.
Well, we can't change the triangular shape of the lot.
Yeah. Okay. Well, thanks for your time.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, could I just ask a question about one of the images? Could you back up the image? So of the construction taking place at the site, that image right there, that, Sean, could you look at that? Is that in compliance with our stormwater runoff rules when it comes to sites that are under construction?
I, I can't speak to... The town would impose its own sediment erosion control.
Mr. Lewis, if I may. The site is not under construction. What you heard before is untrue. There was a demolition permit...
That's a crane now.
There's a demolition permit issued to remove the house. When the complaint was made that they were doing other kind of work, the inspector came, they were excavating rocks that were in the, in the ground. And the building inspector looked at it and said, that's fine. There's no construction going on.
Okay. Well, thank you for that clarification, but we do see the fence and that just does not look compliant with stormwater runoff rules. You're supposed to have it so that if there's a big rainstorm, the, the sediment will not go off the property. And I'm not going to try and enforce that here, but I just want to raise it, on the face of it, it does not look like it's compliant.
We, we complied with the town's requirements and there is sediment, sediment control all around the property. The building inspector was out there and...
Okay. I just wanted to raise the concern based on the image that was put in front of us.
You know, the, the issues you hear, you hear tonight all have to do with, with the construction of a house. This complies with zoning. These lots are bigger than the majority of the lots in the area.
And what do you say to the concern about traffic in terms of your 25-foot setback? Is that sufficient so that the home on the, on the corner parcel will not create an impediment to, to lines of view for traffic?
Absolutely. That's why the town requires a 25-foot setback on the secondary lot. And what is shown on the survey in the heavy black line is the applicant's property. There's additional property, that is, that was referred to as town of North Hempstead. So there's additional visibility from this proposed house because of the town property, the right of way going around the corner.
Okay. I do not have anyone else sign up from the public. At this point, I will entertain a motion. Don't all jump at once.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on NCPC Minor Subdivision File Number 13 of 2020, the property in Port Washington. The motion is for a neg deck and a approval of the minor subdivision that is fully zoning compliant.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, all in favor? Opposed? So carried. Thank you. And thank you for coming down. Let's go back to 11-2020, Jazz.
NCPC File 11-2020. The applicant is 192 North Queens Avenue LLC. Site location, 192 North Queens Avenue in North Massapequa. Massapequa postal code, New York 11758 in the town of Oyster Bay. Section 48, Block 70, lots 448 to 453. The 12,000 square foot area subject property is situated on the south side of North Queens Avenue in the hamlet of North Massapequa in the town of Oyster Bay. The application proposes to subdivide the property, which has 120 feet of frontage on North Queens Avenue into two equal parcels. Proposed lot one and two will have 60 feet of frontage by 100 feet, a total of 6,000 square foot area parcels. The town of Oyster Bay Board of Zoning Appeals has approved the request for variances for the proposed subdivision. Variance to construct new dwelling on subdivided lot having less lot area and width of lot permit permitted by ordinance, decision number 19-589 and 19-590. Here to speak on the application is Christian Brown.
Good afternoon again. Christian Brown, 333 R. Lovington Boulevard, Suite 601, Uniondale, appearing for the applicant. The application has again been summarized. Variances were granted. It's a simple two-lot subdivision. Construct single-family homes on 6,000 square foot lots. Variances have been granted. We would like to proceed to file the deeds with your approval and I won't belabor it any more than that unless you have questions.
Yeah, no, just a question. What was the variance for? What, what's the size?
What's the width requirement for the zoning?
They, I believe it's a 7,000 square foot zone.
So it's a thousand square foot variance?
Correct. Each, each one is, is, each one is 60 by 100, where 70 by 100 is, is required.
So how'd the hearing go? Did you have opposition on the variance?
I actually didn't present this case at the town. My partner Wayne Edwards did, but I do not believe that anyone opposed it. No. And it was granted that same night.
And we have nobody here. So, okay. I do not have anyone sign up for the public, not seeing a hearing, anybody. I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion on NCPC File Number, Minor Subdivision File Number 11 of 2020 in North Massapequa, and the motion is for a neg deck and approval of the minor subdivision.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, all in favor? Opposed? So carried. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Have a good day.
You too. Last case, 12-2020.
Last minor subdivision case is 12-2020. The applicant is 1017 North Fourth Street LLC. Site location, 1017 North Fourth Street in New Hyde Park, New York 11040 in the town of North Hempstead. Section 8, Block 6, lots 34 through 40. The 14,000 square foot area subject property is situated on the west side of North Fourth Street in the hamlet of New Hyde Park in the town of North Hempstead. The application proposes to subdivide the property, which has 140 feet of frontage on North Fourth Street into two parcels. Proposed parcel one will have 90 feet of frontage by 100 feet, a total of a 9,000 square foot area parcel. Proposed parcel two will have 50 feet of frontage by 100 feet, a total of 5,000 square foot area parcel. The town of North Hempstead has issued a letter of zoning compliance signed by Anthony Raguzio on January 30th, 2020 for the proposed subdivision. The application is considered as of right. Here to speak on the application is Gino Mara.
Unless, are you Gino Mara? Because you're the only one left. If you're not, we got a problem.
My name is Gino Mara, 61 Devashia Drive. I am the owner of 1017 North Fourth Street. I'm subdividing it into two parcels, one a 50 by 100 minimum size lot for town of North Hempstead, even though I wanted 60. And the other is 90 by 100 with a two-family on it.
So when you say you wanted 60, how come you didn't get the 60? I'm curious.
Um, in my, on that block...
Was that significantly different? You got a 90 by 100 then a 50 by 100?
Well, minimum, well, the thing is, the, the rule is, the house was built in, in the 40s, 50s, I'm sorry. It was subdivided. The owner then bought all this parcel of land. So he had made a two-family house on the one parcel, which was in compliant of 80 by 100 at the time. The rules have changed, so now it's 100 by 100 to make a two-family. So the town of North Hempstead saw that it was more compliance to have a 90 by 100 and a 50 by 100, which is the minimum size lot in the area, which in reality, the lots in the area are a little bit larger. Minimum size lot would be 63.
Jazz, did you back up that image? Two 70s by 100 would have made more sense to me, but...
Uh, in the area looking, it would have, but we go with who rules the rules. So I am minimum, I'm sorry?
Just the picture of the house. That's what we're looking for. The picture of the house.
Again, it, it is going to be rectangular, so I'm at the minimum size lot.
Does the 50 by 100, does the house retain?
Yes. It's minimum size lot of town of North Hempstead.
That one we're looking at, that...
That is going to be on a 90 by 100. That is existing and remaining. That's not going to be, not that. But the land, the land is 140 feet. I actually bought this parcel to have, build two houses and plus that, but it was denied down to one house. So, so that's what's remaining.
Okay. Well, I do not have anyone here from the public and you were the last person from the public, so I'll entertain a motion.
Chair, I move a approval with a neg deck, NCPC File 12-2020.
Motion made.
Second.
And seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
Today, everybody.
We are adjourned. See you in April. We are adjourned. See you in April.
Take care.